I'd like to call to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, August 7, 2024. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Roth?
Oh, you said that wrong.
Here.
Sorry, Councilmember Rallo is not here, just to clarify.
Pete Mat Smith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Rosenberg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
All right, I will read our land and labor acknowledgment before I move on to summarize our agenda. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically African labor that was enslaved. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. On tonight's agenda, we will have reports from council members, and then from Mayor Kerry Thompson on encampments and service provider recommendations regarding unhoused community members. Then we will have reports from council committees, if there are any, and then we will have the first opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Then we will move on to legislation for second readings and resolutions. Because we have no appointments to boards and commissions, we have no first readings, so we move right to second readings then, and there we have the appropriation ordinance 2024-02 to additionally appropriate food and beverage tax funds, general fund dollars, and ARPA, state and local fiscal recovery fund dollars for 2024, and to approve of a revised 2024 budget for the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board of Managers. We then move on to an additional period for public comment. We'll discuss items of the council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So, moving to reports from council members, I'll start on my left. Councilmember Daley, do you have a report this evening?
I just have a quick announcement. I just wanted to announce that I'm going to be holding a constituent meeting on Thursday, August 22, at 5:00 PM at the Monroe County Public Library. It has not been posted online yet, I just got this scheduled, and I will announce the room number and all of the details very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Asari?
Just a very quick one. This week, well, this week on Friday, at the BDC, which is the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, we heard a presentation from the Owen Cowan knee chamber and some other folks around the idea of joining, this is very loud, around the idea of joining Economic Development District with Brown County and Owen County. The proposal is moving forward, and they're hoping that the various branches of city government will just send support letters. I have a lot of thoughts on this, and so I'll send a memo around to you all, and maybe we can include that in next meeting's packet at the end of the month, but just wanted to make everybody aware that this was something that's in the works, and happy to answer any questions about it as the meeting progresses, but I will be recommending that we, as a council, send a support letter, and also that we're sort of involved in the deliberations that will happen thereafter. So, just a general update for forthcoming work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. I do have a couple of things that I want to say. First of all, I want to wish everybody involved with MCCSC's first day of school today, happy first day of school, parents, faculty, staff, children, bus drivers, all the people involved in that. Hopefully, it went smoothly for everybody. Haven't seen all of my kids this evening yet to know if it went smoothly for them, so we'll just have to wait and see about that. Second thing I wanted to acknowledge was that last night was the National Night Out event hosted by our police department here, and I stopped by that event. It was a great event, it was lots of fun, and I just wanted to shout out public safety in general at this event. They had police and fire, and they had regional departments as well, and it was fun. My teenage children even actually had fun playing giant Jenga, so just a shout out to police, fire, dispatch, EMS, and other first responders for their work. And I also, last week, I announced the third meeting about the Longview Neighborhood Greenway, and I just wanted to say that I've just been really happy with how that whole process has gone through. The Longview Greenway plan is right in my neighborhood, so it's been something like that I, as a local neighbor, and then also, of course, that being in District 3, have been very interested in how that's going. The whole process was just very smooth, and I was really impressed with both how staff and the neighbors just collaborated really well, and everybody had really good intentions and really listened to each other, and really seemed to reach some understanding, especially around the idea that everybody wants that to be a successful street for all users. So, it was just a really, really positive experience, and I'm really excited to have that kind of finish up. It's going to go, it's going to be tweaked a little bit, and then it's going to go before Bike Pet, I believe, in September, and then construction is next year. So, that just went really well, and I'm really pleased with it. And then lastly, I have two changes to my upcoming constituent meetings, because once again, school has started, and I have runners in my family, which means on Saturdays, my kids have meets, have cross-country meets. So, my August meeting, instead of being held on a Saturday, I have moved it to Monday, August 19, from 5:15 to 6:15, in the Kelly Conference Room, which is Room 155, right down the hall here. So, again, my August meeting is going to be Monday, August 19, from 5:15 to 6:15 in the evening. And then my September meeting is also going to be moved, and my September meeting will actually be on Sunday, September 22, from 3 to 4, and that will be Zoom only. So, the August meeting, as the others have been, will be in-person only, down the hall, and then in September, it will be Zoom only on a Sunday afternoon. So, if anybody keeps track of those, that's the update. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have a report tonight?
Sure, thank you. Just briefly, wanted to have the information in front of me. Last week, Councilmember Rosenberg mentioned the Indiana Avenue Safety Improvement Project that has had some initial steps around understanding the street conditions, how different types of folks use the street, what safety needs and concerns they have, that kind of thing, and so there was a survey out for input on the initial concept designs, which is closed now, but there is a meeting on Tuesday, August 13, at 5:30 PM at the Sample Gates to take feedback on the project as well, and so you can, just reminding folks about that, and the opportunity to help actualize our Safe Streets for All commitment that we made as a council earlier this year, and the action plan, I know, is still forthcoming. So, anyway, that's at bloomington.in.gov/engineering/projects/indiana. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulik, do you have a report tonight?
No report, thank you.
And Councilmember Roth?
No report, thanks.
All right, I will just report on a couple of things. First of all, councilmembers Zulik, Rosenberg, and myself attended the Local Progress convening in Oakland, California about 10 days ago, and it was a really great experience. You may recall that councilmembers Rosenberg and Flaherty and myself reported on it last September. Last year was in September, now it was at the end of July, and just wanted to mention some of the sessions that I attended and am happy to talk more about with anybody who may be interested. So, we learned a little bit about Oakland and its history of activism and some tenant rights groups that they have in that community. I attended a session on community-led emergency response, as I did last year, so that's a particular interest of mine. There was a session on messaging and trying to get people involved in government through your messaging and reflecting how our decisions are important to constituents. And there was a session on balancing priorities within zoning and land use, which, of course, is something that we have a very important relationship here in Bloomington. We've had a lot of very heated discussions on zoning and land use, and so that was an interesting session to attend as well. Building a progressive economic worldview, so countering the neoliberalist idea of that there has to be lower-income people and higher-income people, and there have to be these social divisions because of free market. So, countering that with a more people-focused economic worldview. And then there was a session on strategizing for tenant power and taking on corporate landlords, which is a problem in Bloomington, as well as many other places throughout the city, or throughout the country. Yeah, so that is a summary of some of the sessions I attended. It was very interesting, there was a lot of good networking. Of course, some of the cities that have accomplished, that have made progress in these areas are in blue states, and we in this state have a lot of state preemption that keeps us from doing a lot of reforms that would benefit our constituents. But even in red states, there are cities doing really interesting things, and we can learn from them. The other report is that I do have a constituent meeting coming up this Saturday at 11:00 AM via Zoom, and that link is on the city council website on the right side in the calendar. So, I welcome anybody, especially from District 1, to come join me on Saturday. So, next, we can move on to the report from Mayor Thompson on encampments and service provider recommendations for unhoused individuals. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate the time tonight to talk to you all about this. I know I'm here to report on encampments and also the Housing Action Plan that was presented yesterday. I'll get right to that, but I did want to just let council know, if you haven't heard, we learned about an hour and a half ago that the courts ruled against the city on the annexation case, so more to come on that later. As you know, since January, we have closed four different encampments in the city of Bloomington, and we were set to close another one on Monday. These are some of the most difficult days that I have faced in office so far, and we have postponed the encampment closure that was supposed to happen on Monday because many of our partners that have street outreach workers are not fully staffed right now, and so they asked for more time to be able to do additional outreach to people living in those camps, and we postponed for that reason. Many of the people living in that camp have already moved, and we believe our count today is that there are 14 or 15 people in that camp now. So, we will be closing it as it continues to have safety challenges, but we are deeply grateful for the work of the many outreach workers and our DROs at the city of Bloomington for the work that they do every day. I will be talking more about the need for outreach and case management later in my report, but I know we have some folks here that are, that in fact, worked on this plan that I will be talking about tonight, and head up the organizations that have these outreach workers, and our community really owes them a debt of gratitude for all of the work that they do. In May, as we were facing another camp closure, I met with a couple of representatives from housing organizations, and I asked them for a plan for what we should do as a city as we're facing camp after camp that becomes unsafe, and we need to move them. And they asked for some time to get together with their colleagues and come up with an actual plan, rather than responding in the moment what would be best. And so Heading Home has graciously gathered that team of shelter providers and outreach organizations together, and that group put together a plan to address street homelessness. I want to be clear that this plan is a plan to address the growing number of people living outside. It is not a replacement to the existing Heading Home Plan. It is in addition to that plan, and that Heading Home Plan has been in the process of being implemented now for years, and we are making progress on that plan. This Housing Action Plan that we're discussing tonight has 10 different recommendations. Do you all have that in front of you? Okay, so this was released publicly yesterday. There are links available to it. I want to discuss some of the aspects of this plan and just briefly review it with you. As you may have seen, our point-in-time count from January, we do that every January, as does the rest of the nation, showed a dramatic rise in street homelessness in the Monroe County region. Much of that is occurring within our city limits. Our count, in fact, doubled in our region year to year. Bloomington is not alone in seeing a rise in street homelessness. We do join with the rest of the country in facing this crisis, but our street homelessness count has risen faster than the average in Indiana. The plan that Heading Home presented yesterday at the press event has 10 different recommendations, and if the slides can go up, can they go up? Oh, there we go. Okay. So, these are the immediate priority needs, and they are in front of you, but I'll review them briefly verbally. So, first, to support coordinated street outreach and linkage to services. That includes emergency shelter and housing. So, that is the street outreach that is currently working, but this plan asks for more. We are not meeting the HUD recommendations of the number of street outreach workers. Additionally, we need to strengthen our case management support. That is going to, that's going to demand more caseworkers, and our partners at Bloomington Health Foundation are working on a plan to recruit and hire and train some community navigators. These case managers are in addition to those. Additionally, strengthen diversion efforts. This is the work to prevent homelessness. So, this is when we're looking at people who are at risk of being evicted, people who are currently housed, where their housing may not be stable. Heading Home is already doing this work, but we need more of it. Our fourth recommendation is, as a short-term measure to address the inflow, enact a temporary moratorium on welcoming people from outside of our region to overnight emergency shelters, and to provide reunification services for out-of-region people, exploring ways to mitigate the increase of non-regional residents experiencing homelessness. So, the group that made this plan did not reach 100% on this recommendation, but the bulk of our shelter providers are on board with this recommendation. And so this involves sheltering people for a short period of time while these case managers work with them to get back to where their safety nets are, back to where their family is. In Indiana, outside of Bloomington and Indianapolis, we have more than 120 shelters. So, if people are coming from within the state, there are many, many other shelters available, and what we know is when we disconnect people from their safety nets, it becomes harder and harder to restore those. Next, increase the number of housing units with rents under $500 a month. This comes as a recommendation in the recent ROI study, so you've heard it before. People are not making enough money to pay the rents that we have in our community. As a former housing provider, I will tell you, in today's market, this by definition means that we either need to do housing differently, or we need to heavily subsidize those units. It's impossible to build a full apartment and break even, even, at $500 a month. So, these would need to be subsidized, or we would have to have a different model of housing. Bolster security and services for permanent supportive housing to reduce exits to homelessness. This is, it's critically important. When we put together permanent housing, it must have security, and it must have supportive services. Many people who are newly housed are going to need intensive case management, as well as other supports, for a number of months and perhaps even years. Finally, two final recommendations. Increase the number of beds for medical respite. When I asked how many we would need, these are people who may be coming out of the hospital and then released directly back into an encampment, where no one can really heal. So, the recommendation is really that we need about 10 beds for medical respite, and that would come with some supportive services. And then finally, to determine any need for additional shelter beds. We do have empty shelter beds in our community every night, enough that would have fully housed the number of people living in the encampment that we are currently working on closing. So, the community really needs to look at why are people not using those shelter beds, and what barriers are there to using them? What other solutions are there out there? So, this is the, this is, again, the Housing Action Plan that is just targeted at street homelessness, and this plan was devised by the providers and partners providing shelter in our community today. Isabel, how are we on time? You want me to?
We have 10 more minutes, but we'd like to have some time for questions.
Okay, so I'll just briefly say that all of our work in housing is on a housing-first model. That is based on the premise that people need to be housed before they can work on other challenges in their lives, because they're spending all of their energy just trying to survive. Housing is medicine. It is health care, and we are going to see impacts on, continued impacts, negative impacts on our health care system if we can't get people housed. We're also seeing many other impacts in our community. I think, as we all know, it's impacting our community morale, it's impacting our downtown businesses, it's impacting public health and safety, and it is, it's really imperative that we work on this. This is the housing part of the plan. The city, as elected officials, it is, it is our imperative to take care of the rest of what's needed. So, it is our job to work on safety, and our job to start looking at what other partners we need at the table. There are many partners that are called out in this plan. It's going to take state, federal, county, and private investment to get a comprehensive plan working to actually solve this. I am happy to take questions from you all.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Are there questions from council members? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Should we expect to see some of this reflected in the upcoming budget for next year, or?
You absolutely will see this reflected in the budget, and now that we have a housing plan, the administration's intent is to start putting together all of the action pieces. We've already been working on some of them to get our downtown and neighborhood safety and vitality improved.
Other questions from council members? Councilmember Zulik?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. So, since, I guess I'll leave that out, has there been any collaboration with the county side for this Housing Action Plan?
We have done outreach to the county. There are still questions about the plan, so, you know, what I have stated and I stand by is that we need to all be reading off the same sheet of music. We need to be rowing in the same direction in order to actually make impact, because we can unintentionally create a symbiosis that we don't want. And so, I intend to only fund projects, housing projects that are in line with the Heading Home Plan. Those are our housing experts in town, and I have asked the county to consider the same.
Other questions from council colleagues? Councilmember Roth?
So, some of the assumptions that go into these needs are the, is there, are we working from a widely shared set of assumptions? And I'll give you an example. For years, some folks have, I can speak for what others on the council or others in the room have heard, but for years, by some people, and some people that are very much involved in dealing with the homelessness situation here in the community, been told, for example, it's a myth that a lot of our unhoused folks are from outside the community, that the actual numbers of homeless folks are, has been stable for 10 years, for example. So, my, some of these recommendations, or the strategy, this plan, is sort of based on assumptions that are inconsistent with some of the things that I've always heard. Can you talk to that?
I can absolutely speak to that, and Ash is very graciously trying to do some troubleshooting, or if you have, are we good? Thank you, Ash. So, this data, also publicly available, comes out of a survey that our partners did in May. So, the only, the unified PIT count happens in January. It asks a standard set of questions. This survey asked different questions, including where are you from and how long have you been here? And so, this is, this is a snapshot of that data. You can see that we do, in fact, have a considerable number of people who are unhoused, who are from outside of, not only outside of Monroe County, but outside of our region, and in fact, outside of Indiana. So, yes, I know lots of people have thoughts about what might be true. This is the data. We've never taken this data before. I would like to make sure we have funding to take this data every year. And so, you see that, in fact, we, the Monroe County numbers are not significantly increased by including the region. That's Region 10, which is a defined HUD region, so HUD funds programs within a region. Many of our shelter providers are compelled, or their mission statements serve that entire region, so our numbers don't go up significantly by serving that region, and that is the recommendation in the plan, that we continue to serve the region. But that for a time, we are going to temporarily seek to reunify people that... But that for a time, we are going to temporarily seek to reunify people that are from outside of the region. The fact of the matter is, and I abbreviated my talk a bit, we are having success working the Heading Home Plan. We are getting people permanently housed. But we're doing that at a far slower pace than the influx of people who are in need of services. If we are to solve this problem, we must first get to a point where we know what actually is working in our community, and our providers, our public safety workers, our other government employees, who are honestly working night and day on this challenge, and they wake up every day and there's more to do than there was yesterday. Our neighbors feel the same. We're getting compassion fatigue. We need to get our heads above water and really do very excellent partnership work with strong case management, strong street outreach, so that we can be the model for how we solve homelessness.
I wanted to ask a question. Were any people with lived experience of being unhoused part of the plan process?
There have been people who have lived experience part of the Heading Home Plan. This emergency plan, and I can't speak to whether or not they were consulted. We do have people in the room who could, if you'd like to, I don't want to put them on the spot. So I could just tell you, I don't know if they were consulted. This was a group of just providers that actually assembled the plan. So that's what I can tell you, without putting anybody on the spot.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Yeah, before I ask my question, should we extend time because we're about to run out of it?
Yes, if there's no objection, let us extend the time for another five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. While that data is up there, one of the things I notice about it is that the Monroe County part, it's always been from Monroe County. So how was somebody, say, classified who may have been here for 10 years? Or 20 years, but maybe weren't always here?
Here's another snap of data. And the data is also, that also was published yesterday, earlier than yesterday. So there are links to that that you can dig into. But these are the people who've been in Monroe County for less than two years. This is a breakdown of where they come from.
Thank you.
That's my last slide, so if you ask me another complicated question, I'm just...
Are there other questions for Mayor Thompson? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you for the report, and thanks for all the work that went into this. You spoke about unintended consequences a little bit. I'm thinking about most shelter providers turning folks away after a period of time if they're not from here. There's also, I'm just looking at, I haven't gone through this exhaustively, but I'm looking through some of the survey results, and it says that the folks asked if they would like to return to the place where they were before coming here. 62 said no, 23 said yes, and three folks didn't answer. So something like 75% say no, they don't want to go back to where they're from. And we're saying, for the majority of providers, we're not going to let you stay at a shelter either. And what do we think those 75% of folks are going to do? I would imagine most are going to stay unsheltered, unhoused here in Bloomington, which seems counterproductive to the stated goals of the plan of addressing street homelessness. So like, has that potential impact been thought of and addressed? Like, what are the concerns or thoughts about that?
Yes. You know, I think we certainly, I can't speak for the providers, but there has been discussion about this. And it is anecdotally true that people know if they come to Bloomington, they're going to get services. And that may or may not be why we have such a large influx. But I think until we start working with that, we won't know. We also know that when we can partner with, I mean, if you say you can't have services here, and we partner with them to reunify and get them to services, my guess is that we'll have a larger success than that. The thing that keeps me up at night, quite frankly, is a single mom from a listening session that I did earlier this year, who said, you know, lots of us sitting in this room came to Bloomington because you have great services, but you all only have enough services to keep us all homeless. That's not where we want to be.
Any other final questions? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. Thank you for this insight. I'm going to move to graphic. Okay, what too about like immediate needs, such as, you know, like going to the bathroom? Finding places for folks to go to the bathroom? Or, like, a lot of people nowadays seem to have dogs, and so like places like keep their stuff when they're looking for jobs, or, I don't know about the dogs, keep their dogs too when they're looking for jobs. I guess like something other than housing, I guess. Like, I know some cities have almost like permanent porta-pots in structures that can be removed, cleaned, emptied, all that good stuff. Like, do we have? I think it'd be useful for unhoused and actually residents and visitors, I guess. I'm going to ask another question, just related. Other cities I have seen too also, like church parking lots will like kind of adopt a porta-pot and put it in their space. Like, is that something that maybe we could get going here?
So that is part of the work that our city team has already started to discuss, because that is part of our public health and safety. And to be blunt, we're dealing with a lot of fecal matter. That's not where it goes. And, you know, the city actually built the Fourth Street, the bathroom at Fourth Street Garage for this purpose, and very soon after it was open, it was filled with concrete. And we have spent $160,000 repairing that. So before we do these things, we need to think carefully about how we're going to do them, if we can actually get people to use them, and where they need to be if we want them to be used. But it is part of our considerations.
Thanks. And that is why I recommend porta-pots, because the Fourth Street, regular plumbing does not seem to be useful, actually, but I think something with like larger holes that can be emptied and cleaned are better. I have a different question, it's just, can I ask, or is that okay?
Are there any objections to allowing Councilmember Rosenbarger to finish her question before we end this portion? Go ahead.
With the increase in number of housing units with rents under 500, how can we almost like do this faster? Like, right now, there is this five-unit building on the market, right? The rents are starting at $450. It's probably going to be bought and destroyed. Like, does the city have anything in place where like we can buy it and keep it? Or like buy it and send it somewhere, right, to Summit or BHA, right? Or the co-op or something for that? Because it's like walkable and, you know, so simple, but it'll probably be destroyed.
So the answer is yes, there are some solutions that we can work. I've moved houses before. It's not an economically viable solution usually, if you're looking to keep it affordable. While I have the public mic, I'll just say, it's not outside of the realm of possibility that we get a group of private residents who want to do good investing, public good investing, that will form a coalition and start buying these and renting them. And that could be a nonprofit, that could be just an LLC. It's done in other communities. And it's not outside the realm of possibility if there's some kind of guaranteed rent there that some of our housing dollars could be used that way. You are right, we need to preserve the affordable units that we have. That's plain and simple, we do.
We'll go to 7:15. Councilmember Daley?
Sorry. Thank you. Just real quick, first of all, thank you so much. This is really helpful, and I'm grateful you're here tonight to...
The gratitude goes to Heading Home Partners.
And thank you to Heading Home, very grateful, and the partners. What is the marker of success for this? At what point do we say, you know, this has been successful, or we know we need to keep going?
A dramatic decrease in the number of people living on our streets.
Do we have a number that we're aiming for, or we're just feeling it?
Well, you don't know me very well, but the number I'm aiming for is zero. And you just have to aim for what you truly want. I don't think anybody can live at the top of their human license if they're spending their energy trying to stay warm and dry. Before I give up the mic, I just want to note Heading Home is hosting a public workshop on Tuesday night. That was set before anybody knew the council was inviting people to your consensus-building activity, or even that you had one. And so my hope is, so first of all, you're all invited. My hope is that, in fact, that workshop may help inform that consensus-building activity. And so that's going to be 5:30 to 7:30 at the Convention Center. Did I get that right, Mary? Yep. So Tuesday evening, the 13th, 5:30 to 7:30. It is an all-play. Everybody's welcome. We're going to stay solution-focused, and we're going to focus on the solutions that have already been recommended. So how are we going to get this done? So Kate, your suggestion about the, buy the affordable units that are there, those are exactly the kind of ideas we want, so we can start targeting for how do we implement them.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson.
And I would like to add, since we're on the topic, that indeed, next Wednesday evening, we will not have a regular session of the City Council. We will instead have a consensus-building activity on the topic of street homelessness, and specifically what the City Council can do, either legislatively or through our influence on the budget. So there will be more information going out in the council packet that comes out on Friday, and we encourage anybody who wants to to attend. They will be, it'll be at 6:30 in this room. We will have breakout sessions for group discussions, and then a big group discussion facilitated by C-Jam. All right. So we will next move to any reports from council committees. Are there any reports this evening? Seeing none. We will move to public comment. So this is maximum 20 minutes for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on the agenda, and it's a maximum of three minutes each. And if you are here in person, you can come up to the podium, and please clearly write down your name in the sign-out sheet, sign-up sheet, and then state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes. And Deputy Attorney Kulak, can you make an announcement, please, for anyone on Zoom?
Sure. If you want to, if you'd like to make a public comment, you can do so by raising your hand. You can do that by using the Reactions tab, and if you cannot find that in the toolbar at the bottom, hit the More tab, and then you'll find the Reactions tab from there.
Thank you. Let's start here, council chambers.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. My name is Graylee, and as a young trans woman, I know what it's like to fear for my safety. And I'm here today to talk about the safety concerns regarding the Bloomington Rail Trail. So the rail trail is very close to my home. I often walk there alone at night, usually wearing what you see, wearing only this, nothing else on me. And I recently heard that the city is moving to clear out all of the camps along the rail trail, citing in part, public safety concerns. And this was a move that shocked me. I understand and appreciate the steps that you all are taking to give unhoused folks more permanent housing options. These are certainly steps in the right direction, and I thank you for that. But the fact of the matter is that right now, kicking people out of camps means kicking people out of the only option that they have, and leaving them on the streets. Regarding the public safety concerns that were cited, I did read the relevant U-Report file on that refers to two to three individuals at a camp yelling at each other. And to me, that feels no different than a domestic dispute between people within their own home. The only difference to me is that these people do not have the privilege of a roof over their head. Personally, I have never felt unsafe while using the rail trail. If I had the time, I would love to tell you in depth the story of the time I was having a crisis late at night, and somebody on the rail trail who lives at one of those camps let me his flashlight and offered to walk with me to my house. He really saved me that night. And ever since that night, I have taken the time to actually get to know everyone who lives on those camps. And now I can probably say that these are my neighbors, and I love my neighbors. And I'm not trying to tell you that they're perfect, because they're not, but I will tell you that if you take the time to get to know these people that you were afraid of, you'll find that there's nothing to fear. I would like to politely encourage everyone to, as I recently had to do myself, think about how your biases against the unhoused community are reflected in the way that you view and interact with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to give a comment?
Hands raised right now.
Thank you. So the next person here in council chambers?
Hi, my name's Dave DeKidd. I'm a resident of the city of Bloomington. I'm really grateful for the work that Heading Home has done, and in collaboration with the city and all of the organizations in town. I want to echo Councilmember Rosenbarger's questions and concerns about some immediate needs of lockers and care for dogs. I know, as I've spoken to, I live within a mile of at least three camps, one of them where we unfortunately had two murders fairly recently. And I know that especially women like to have dogs for protection. So if, even if we're looking at apartments that cost less than $500 a month, you still need a job, what are you going to do with your dog and your belongings in the meantime, while you're working, before you have that housing available? I want to encourage the council and the mayor's office, before finalizing any plan about this, to bring in the people who are actively experiencing homelessness, so we know that where we're putting our energy and resources, these are things that will be welcomed by the people that we are trying to impact. It's called human-centered design, and many cities around the US use this technique. In fact, we used it at the city to reimagine our leaf collection program. As much as I respect the experts and all of the organizations who have participated in this, there's nothing that trumps someone who has the lived experience of this. And thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom yet? Okay. Next person here in council chambers?
Good evening, council. I'm Barry Morgan. I'm director of Heading Home of South Central Indiana, and appreciate your interest in this really challenging subject. I wanted to especially give a shout-out today to some of the members from the group that developed this Housing Action Plan who are here today. Melissa Burgess from Health Net, Homeless Initiative Program. Dana Jones from Wheeler Mission. Our group also included Emily Pike from New Hope for Families, Carrie Stillions from Middleway House, and Forrest Gilmore from Beacon, as well as Tatiana Wheeler and myself from Heading Home. I don't have permission to say specifically, but one of our group members has had experience, lived experience with homelessness, and brought that perspective to our discussion. And the plan itself, I think, I have to say something about finalizing it. We see this as our best recommendations after some months of some very challenging conversations, but we don't say this is the answer, and we are not going to consider any other possibility. In fact, for one of the recommendations that talks about how do we address the number of people who are coming here from outside of this region, I don't think anybody... the number of people who are coming here from outside of this region, I don't think anybody, I mean, if resources were limited, nobody would want to, to put any kind of restrictions on the people that are served. And one of the recommendations in that full plan, which is 21 pages and goes into a lot more detail and gives a lot more context, is that we need to explore other ways that we can manage inflow. And whether that's in collaboration, developing stronger partnerships with other regions of the state that have services as well, or, or other strategies that we haven't thought of, that is one of the things that we want to be doing. So I just wanted to say that. And then the, also, there was a question about, about how to measure success, I think, council member, you were one of those. In our plan, we do have a specific goal to reduce the number of unsheltered homelessness by at least 50% by the end of 2027 and 70% by 2030. So we have those specific goals, and one of the things that we're committed to doing, as Mayor Thomas indicated, Thompson, sorry, Mayor Thompson indicated, this was the first year that we have done a, and I'm almost out of time. So I would be happy to answer questions at a later date for you. Thanks again.
All right, next speaker here in chambers.
Good evening, Councilor Eric Spoonmore, President of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. That's what I'm, in the capacity that I'm speaking on this issue tonight for public comment. We represent about 850 employers in the Greater Bloomington area, several of which were participants that put this plan together. And I just want to say that I am so proud to see the community service providers and our partners in government coming together to address this crisis. And I appreciate your attention to it. This plan has our full-throated support. And we want to continue, you know, really, we are desperate for progress in this area. And, you know, we want to see this leadership continue. We appreciate the leadership of the organizations involved and from the mayor's office and the administration. And we want to see more people coming together and unifying behind this plan. I think it's a great way to move forward in making progress and making a very positive difference in our community. And so just please continue working together on this. And consider the business community as partners. We want to be a part of the solution on this as well, too. So thank you very much.
All right. Interim Council Attorney Administrator Kulak, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, there is a comment that was sent to the chat from Sam Dove that I will read into the record.
Thank you.
The comment is, "I echo Mayor's remark about homeless people and homeless people need stop sleeping in park. There are several unhoused men living at the shelter at the Winslow Woods Park between the community gardens and playground. They have been there for weeks. They are, they left for a day and are back now with a friend and his dogs. They burn wood in the grill day and night, never leave, and have a car packed with their belongings. They have taken over picnic tables as beds. No one else can use the shelter, and it feels unsafe. Running them off for one day is not solving this problem. We do not feel safe going to the community gardens and orchard alone any longer. Why are they allowed to camp there? Please make this playground, shelter, and garden area safe again." That is the comment.
Thank you. Next comment here in council chambers?
I like what that guy just said on the Zoom just a second ago that you read off of. I agree with that 100%, man. The homeless, you know, I gotta, I gotta say, I've got a daughter in jail. I don't want no retributions. If, if I'm up here and I say something to piss someone off, leave my daughter out of this. Okay, let's make that straight. I'm up here on my own free will. My daughter's up there. She doesn't have anything to do with what I'm saying. Let's not, let's leave that alone. The mayor right here is working on the homeless thing, man. We, we've had three other mayors. Fernandez, which was a failure. Cruzan, which is a failure, and Hamilton. Man, that guy was off-the-wall crazy. That guy didn't help at all. He was bringing people in, man. Come on into Bloomington. All three of them mayors were like that. Come on in, man. Come on in. We got you a building, man. We, we'll put you up in here. This woman, Mayor Thompson's actually trying to do something about it, but so far gone, you know, and the thing, you know, the thing is, tents or flats and cropper houses, man, that's a nightmare. Them places are a nightmare. You drive down a cropper house, you look, you, you, you pull up in and you watch that thing for a minute, and it's out of control, man. There's nobody working. You need, you're talking about housing these people, but you gotta put them to work. Make them work, man. Give them job training. Give them job training, man, before you give an apartment to them. They sleep all day up here, tents or flats, cropper house, that's working, doesn't, it doesn't even cross their mind. But, man, three minutes just ain't long enough, man. Man, I've got a list a mile long. You know? But, a lot of people like to write stuff down so they can remember, and I don't, I don't, I don't do that, but I need to. Let's see. But really, the mayor's, the mayor's doing a great job. And sir, sir, when, when, when you're talking about the homeless people and you're walking down the trails.
You need to address your comments to the chair.
Okay, but she's got, he's got bigger balls than me to walk down them trails at night, man. And that other woman, oh, they're all good, man. I, I feel safe down. Man, you're crazy. You're crazy. Don't trust them people. And you talking about the Miami Indians at the first of your meetings, they ought to come up here and talk for themselves. You know, you talk for other people. They want to come up here. If they got a problem, they can come up here. That's like black people. They can come up here and talk too.
That's the end of your time.
Okay.
That's the end of your time.
Okay, bye-bye.
And I strongly disapprove of the comments attacking somebody as crazy. I will not stand for that kind of talk. All right, anybody else from the public? We have a few more minutes for public comment. All right, we will, yes, no?
I did get a message.
In eight-point font.
One moment. Okay, I, can you start? Yep, I got a comment from Emily Pike, who, who says, "As a service provider, I am very pleased to see a collaborative and proactive plan. I know there will be much more work to do, but this plan is a strong starting place to grow from and continue learning. I am eager to try as many strategies as it takes to help our unhoused neighbors move through homelessness to stability." That is the comment.
Thank you. All right, next we will move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2024-02 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded that appropriation ordinance 2024-02 by, be read by the clerk by title and synopsis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the deputy clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2402 to additionally appropriate food and beverage tax funds, general fund dollars, and ARPA state and local fiscal recovery fund dollars for 2024, and to approve of a revised 2024 budget for the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board of Managers. Synopsis: This ordinance provides permission to spend additional food and beverage, general, and ARPA funds in order to provide funds in 2024 for the Capital Improvement Board for the Clerk of the City of Bloomington, and to ensure that the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department has room in its budget to reabsorb and spend ARPA funds that may be returned by United Way of Monroe County and Heading Home.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2024-02 be adopted.
Councilmember Zulik?
Consideration of appropriation ordinance 2024-02 be divided into three parts. Part one being consideration of the second, third, and fourth whereas clauses. Section one, the additional sums of money additionally appropriated under Food and Beverage Tax Fund 152-Controller. And section two, part two being consideration of the fifth whereas clause, and the section one, the additional sums of money additionally appropriated under General Fund 101-Clerk. And part three being consideration of the sixth and seventh whereas clause, and section one, the additional sums of money additionally appropriated under ARPA Local Fiscal Recovery Fund 176-Hand.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to divide the question into three parts. Is there any question for Councilmember Zulik? All right. Deputy Clerk Stoll, could you please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Mountain Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion passes. So we will consider part one first, which is consideration of the second, third, and fourth whereas clauses. Consideration of section one, the additional sums of money appropriated under Food and Beverage Tax Fund, and section two of the ordinance. So who is here to present on the additional funds from the food and beverage tax?
The council members. My name is Jeff Underwood. I'm the Controller and Deputy Assistant Treasurer for the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board. Also with me tonight is John Wyckart, our president, and Eric Spoonmore, our treasurer. We came before you in late June seeking a resolution to send to the food and beverage tax. You approved that. We went to the FabTAC in July 22nd, and they approved that request as well. And then the third leg of that journey is to come back to you all for the additional appropriation. This is for consideration of our amended budget. Just sort of quickly, if you remember, the 2024 budget included an initial budget for the CIB of $250,000. We got that approved earlier this year and at that time mentioned that we would be back for an additional appropriation as we were able to look at the spending needed for this budget. So tonight, we're asking for the approval of a revised budget of $600,702. This is an increase of $350,702 overall. And I'll quickly run through how that breaks down. So in category supplies, category two supplies, that's a decrease of $500. In category three, this is services. That's an increase, total increase of $351,202, broken down as follows. In professional services internal, this is for funds to, for the CIB's attorney and myself as controller. So that we're asking for an increase of $32,858 in legal services and $6,844 in controller services. In professional services external, this includes services provided by the owner's representative and represents an increase of $255,000. This request also adds funding in the amount of $75,000 for pre-construction services to be provided by the construction manager, Weddell Brothers, who will actually be doing the construction of the expanded and renovated convention center. In addition, there is some decreases. Initially, we had put $15,000 in for insurance. The county came to us and said that they would be able to cover the board under their insurance policies until such time as the CIB actually owned property. So we were able to decrease that $15,000 to zero. In addition, we had $4,000 for the establishment of a CIB website, which is up and running. So if you're not gone to that, please go see that. So we were able to decrease that by $3,500. So again, revise a budget of $600,702 over the $250,000 original budget. That's an increase of $350,702. And I would be more than happy to answer questions about the budget, and if you have other questions, our other representatives here would be happy to answer those as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Are there questions from council members? No questions?
I have a question. So have the contracts with the construction manager and the additional contract, if any, with Schmidt Associates, have those been signed?
No payments have been made in excess of the original budget and no contracts, the, the contract has not been executed with the brothers yet. We were waiting for approval on the budget.
Okay, so no unappropriated funds have been committed at this point?
And those pre-existing contracts all said that any additional monies could not be billed until appropriated by the city council.
And I will just ask, probably, this is a question for Mr. Wyckart. At what stage are you with the design of the new construction?
Good evening, John Wyckart. Thank you for the question. We are in the initial design phase. We, Schmidt Associates, as you know, is the architect of record. In, in July 24th and 25th, they began a series of meetings in that design stage, seeking both input and as well as providing information to various groups as they move forward with that design. Included in the input they've received thus far, first and foremost, you had the first bite out of the apple, so they have your letter with 21 recommendations for how we might move forward with design. They have now met with the city planning department twice, trying to make certain that we are in compliance with the UDO. They've met with the city of Bloomington Utilities. They've met with utility providers. On the 24th and the 25th, they met with convention center staff and Visit Bloomington staff, the convention center, or the Convention Visitors Commission, Downtown Bloomington, Inc., and a BEAT advisory group that we created. I don't know if I've given you information about that BEAT advisory group, but we created a group of those merchants, vendors who operate within the BEAT district. The northern boundary is Ninth Street where the Bloomington Playwrights Project exists. The southern boundary is Fourth Street. I'm directionally challenged. The eastern boundary is Sample Gates. The western boundary is Rogers. And the courthouse square, all of that within that BEAT district, you may recall that was created a couple of administrations ago. Our BEAT district is one of 11 cultural districts in the state of Indiana. And we created a committee to advise us in two areas. One, to advise the architects on design, to make certain that we were reflecting the uniqueness of Bloomington in that design. The second phase later on will be in attempting to, not attempting, but helping us in terms of marketing and marketing the convention center and marketing the fact that we are one of 11 cultural districts. And I might quickly, if you don't mind, that BEAT advisory committee is chaired by Galen Cassidy, who's the owner and general manager of the Uptown Cafe. Ajan Rose, retired now, but former owner of Textillary Weavers. Holly Warren with the Economic and Sustainability Department. Steve Versaw from the Buskirk-Chumley Theater. Malcolm Abrams, Bloom Magazine. Department, Steve Versaw from the Buskirk-Chumley Theater, Malcolm Abrams, Bloom Magazine, Karen Jepson in his Wonder Lab, Talisha Kopick, the Convention Center, and Jean, I'm sorry, Jen Mojesinowicz from Clash Gallery, who's an artist. So they also met with the design team, with the architect team, so they had input into the process as well. So from that, those two days of meetings, in that initial phase of design, the architects are going to bring to us at our meeting next Wednesday, three designs, if you will, preliminary designs, and ask us as a board for our input on those three designs that came about from those two days of meetings. So that's where we are in the initial phase thus far. All of that is moving us forward to schematic design that will happen in October, and then moving us into construction bidding. All of that, obviously, depended on the bonding process and the city council's approval of the bond. So that's where we are in the design phase at this point.
Great, and of course, all these meetings are public.
Absolutely, all those meetings are public. We now have a website, we've had it for quite some time, I hope you've made use of that. Everything is posted in that website. All of you are on our distribution list for our meetings and have those agendas that include the minutes from previous meetings. So we are making certain that we are as transparent as we can possibly be in our activities.
Excellent, thank you very much. And it's monroeCIB.com if anybody wants to look at the website. Any other questions from council members before we go to the public? Seeing none, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this part of the appropriation ordinance for $350,000 from the food and beverage tax fund for the Convention Center?
Public comment portion for this appropriation ordinance does serve as the public hearing.
Yes, thank you. I don't see anybody here in council chambers. If there's anybody on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function.
No raised hands yet.
All right. Well then, we will come back to council members for final comments before a vote. Is there any council members who would like to comment on this portion of the appropriation ordinance? Seeing none, Deputy Clerk Stoll, could you please call the roll on part one of the appropriation ordinance 2024-02?
Yes.
Pete Mott Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
That passes with a vote of eight, zero, and we will move on to part two, which is an additional appropriation for the office of the city clerk. And I believe, do we have Clerk Bolden with us via Zoom? Greetings, Clerk Bolden. Please go ahead.
Good evening, City Clerk Nicole Bolden. This evening, I would like to ask you all if you could postpone consideration of this portion of the appropriation ordinance. There's some additional conversations I'd like to have before we appropriate this fund.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I will move to postpone consideration of the second part of appropriation ordinance 2024-02 until our regular session on September 4th at 6:30 PM.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to postpone consideration of part two of the appropriation ordinance to Wednesday, September 4th. There any, is this debatable? Attorney Kulak? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
I have a question also, which is just that, are we allowed to do this? To postpone a portion, a portion of a single ordinance, you know, that we've divided the question on?
That is also a good question, and let's give our attorney a moment. Councilmember Stasburg, do you, have you researched this?
Well, it is debatable, so this, this motion to postpone is debatable. I don't know about the dividing the question part, and if that's not allowed, then I would suggest that we like strike it completely and rewrite a whole nother ordinance for it for a later meeting. And I think we probably, it looks like Attorney Rice might have something to say about this.
I just, and it's just a timing issue, and I don't know about the clerk's timing, so if you do strike it and do another ordinance, which we can absolutely do that, we will have to re-advertise, so we'll have a little bit of delay, and then we have a 10-day before your meeting requirement. So totally up to you guys, but if you do, really, the point of announcing in the meeting the date and the time and continuing is so you have alerted the public so that that prior advertisement stays in place. So if you say tonight, like, hey, we're doing this one piece, and we're going to continue it to that next date, as you just said, in the record, then the world is on notice, we don't have to re-advertise. And I don't know about Robert's rules, but from a public notice perspective, we would be fine with doing it that way, since you have told the world when we're going to be having this next public hearing on that one piece. Make sense? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Rice?
So just if we're speaking, if this portion gets postponed, my only thought is, of course, it wouldn't be appropriation ordinance 2024-02 again, it would need to be something different. So if the notice provided tonight could suffice, I don't know whether you would need to reissue the notices, that would be my guess, if you strike it completely from this ordinance and then have it be made into a different one, appropriation ordinance 2024-03. My thought is you would need to reissue those notices.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, if you, if you strike it and make it a brand-new ordinance, we'll just redo the whole thing, the whole advertisement for that. We'll just do a new ordinance for you for the clerk's thing, and we'll re-advertise it. If you want to strike it. If you want to just postpone, right, if you want to just postpone, which I think you can do.
Because this, if this passes with part one and three, it's appropriation ordinance 2024-02, so what is the next thing?
And I think it gets fully, it gets fully approved and executed after you have that next meeting. You see what I mean? It's the same, I mean, the ordinance itself is, is tabled and post, like, the whole ordinance with this number is tabled and postponed, and it becomes fully approved after you have that next meeting.
But that would then delay the other two portions that we may want to adopt.
Yeah, it would, right, the timing of it. So you have a timing problem regardless.
What date is it that we would have to have notice put out, the 10-day notice, if we had it on the 4th? Would that be on the 12th of August, because we would need to have first reading on the 21st?
You know, I'd have to look, and I always have to have somebody call the newspaper and find out, because they swear it gets changed on a regular basis, but it's 10 days before the second reading. So it has to be, yeah, it's 10 days. So then we got to backtrack to when they need us to submit it to them.
Okay, so that should, I think, be plenty of time, because September 4th is a month away.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, so can I, I need to withdraw my motion to postpone then, and then should I just move to strike the appropriate whereas clauses? So let me get to that correct screen.
You, Councilmember Stasburg, you withdraw your motion?
Well, I'm not going to withdraw it until we're done talking about it. Are we done talking about it? Great, then yes, I'm going to. Yes, I will withdraw that.
All right, so that motion is no longer on the table. Do we have another motion in regards to this part of the appropriation ordinance?
There we go, okay. So I'm going to move to strike the fifth whereas clause of appropriation, appropriation ordinance 2024-02.
There must be part of the actual meat of the ordinance that needs to be stricken as well. Everything in part two.
Oh. Would that?
Yes, Attorney Kulak.
If you give me a minute, I can prepare an amendment form to have a proposed amendment to strike all of that language that needs stricken.
Why don't we just all vote no and just move on? Because we've separated the question, so can't we just say we don't want to pass this one?
Would that have any kind of effect later on the line of having a new appropriation ordinance for it, if we voted no for it this time?
If you vote no on the appropriation ordinance as a whole, right now?
No, 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 just part two. Just part two.
You could, you could do that, and that would defeat that part.
Yeah. Okay.
What is this, the latest, you're going to strike what portion?
So again, this is Marjorie Rice Corporation Counsel.
Yeah, sorry, Marjorie Rice Corporation Counsel. You're going to strike what portion?
No, the proposal currently is to go ahead and vote on part two, but vote against it.
So that then, yeah, I think that that's the theory.
Which is the clerk's part, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, then, so the CIB thing passed, clerks will vote no, and then you'll take up the third.
Exactly.
Right.
And that, and we just want to make sure that doesn't preclude a separate appropriation ordinance for the clerk.
There is no double jeopardy. We will bring it back and in a brand-new ordinance, and I want to just say for the record, I will never do this again. So I was just talking to the Controller, I will bring, just, and I apologize for the confusion, every time, if I had known that this would be, you know, there would be certain things that would be controversial, wouldn't have done it. So I'll have a unique additional appropriation ordinance each time.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. All right. So are there any questions on part two of the appropriation ordinance? Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on part two of the appropriation ordinance? No, are there any final comments on part two of the appropriation ordinance? All right, Deputy Clerk Stoll, could you please call the roll on part two of appropriation ordinance 2024-02?
Councilmember Pete Mott Smith?
No.
Stasburg?
No.
Assari?
No.
Rosenberg?
No.
Daley?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Zulik?
No.
Ruff?
No.
Okay, so the vote on part two is zero, eight, is not adopted. We next move on to part three, and these are the ARPA funds. And Controller McClellan, who will you be presenting?
Good evening, Council, Controller McClellan. This appropriation ordinance is to appropriate ARPA funds that we are going to receive back from Heading Home. The city had worked with, at that time, United Way slash Heading Home, and we have an agreement with them for to, for them to be a sub-recipient of the city ARPA funds to address homelessness. They were, we distributed $1.2 million to them, and they have been in constant contact with the city, and we're continuing to update the contract to meet the federal guidelines. And in those negotiations with city Hand and Legal, they've just, Heading Home has decided that they would, that they do not need the entire amount of that money, they're keeping some of it for some programming, and some of it they're going to return to the city for the city to use towards homelessness. The same use, but they are not going to be a sub-recipient for the same total dollar amount. So this was advertised at $500,000. We were not sure how much Heading Home was going to give back, and your approval tonight would just be the authority to spend only up to $500,000. As Controller, I know that we can, you cannot spend more than you actually have. We have a finite amount of ARPA money, so the amount that they actually return to us, they will let us know what that is, they will return that to us, and we could never ever spend over that amount that they return to us. The, if that makes sense, that the authority to spend does not override the ability to spend cash that you don't have. And so I know that there are some people from these organizations here to answer more questions about those agreements between the city and Heading Home, but if you have more questions about the funding mechanism and about like the Controller's role in it, I would be happy to answer those at any point in the discussion. If it comes up later, if you don't have a question now, we can discuss it again later.
Thank you, Controller McClellan. Are there questions about this part of the appropriation ordinance? Yes, Councilmember Daley?
Hi, thank you so much. Just to clarify, just to make sure I'm on the same page, so when we talk about spending that money, right, the authority to spend that money, are we talking about redistributing it then to other? No, the city itself spending the money.
The city will, it will be appropriated to the Hand Department, and the Hand Department will find homeless programs in the city to distribute it to. It will not be spent directly on city functions. It will be spent outside of, to other organi, is that true? I hear voices behind me. Come on up.
Good evening. So we, at the Hand Department, do, oh, Anna Killian Hansen, Housing and Neighborhood Development Director, we are working closely, closely with Mary Morgan and the Heading Home team. We want to implement the Heading Home plan. Really, what this stems from is that federal program compliance is very complicated, and it's a heavy lift. And the Treasury released additional guidance on how to be in compliance with ARPA. It's not something that someone that's not used to it could easily perform, especially with that amount of money. So we still want to accomplish the same exact thing. The money is coming back to Hand. Hand will work with Heading Home to develop projects that support the Heading Home mission, and we will administer those funds, however, and make sure that we're in compliance, because if we're not in compliance, then we are really putting a lot of liability on the city, the full amount of the appropriation or our ARPA funds, period, could be retracted. So we, we just need to make sure that we're in compliance with the federal government, that we're still supporting our mission. Mary and Morgan and I meet regularly, so we're not going away from any of the intended uses of the funds, it's just how it is administered to make sure that we are in full compliance. If that makes sense. Thank you so much, Ms. Killian Hansen. Can I just ask a follow-up question? So the, so Hand intends to use the funds on homelessness programs, follow recommendations of Heading Home. So would those funds be spent directly by the city, or do you foresee that they will be given to another, to one or more other organizations to spend? It could be a combination. It could be a combination, and I think we're talking about a pretty large sum of money, but, and I don't believe that it's something that the City of Bloomington can fully administer without some form of sub-recipient, but it will be more in line with projects, if that makes sense. So we will be developing certain funds to address various needs. Mary, do you have anything that you'd like to comment on in regards to that? I know that her and her team have been working diligently to identify what those are. We have not specified to date exactly what we're going to do quite yet, but I'm going to let you take it over.
Thanks. Mary Morgan, Director of Heading Home of South Central Indiana. If I could go back to my two-year-ago self and tell that person how complicated the administration of federal funds are, I would have been doing myself a favor. The, what we were facing is a layering of sub-recipients and sub-sub-recipients. So just to be clear, this is something that we are grateful for the city to be working with us on, so that we are not facing the same level of reporting and auditing. with us on, so that we are not facing the same level of reporting and auditing that we would face if we were not doing this reappropriation. We had intended to be granting out funds directly, but it would have created this cascading effect, and so now we're eliminating two different layers by having the city grant out those funds based on our recommendations. We are going to be aligning our recommendations with the Heading Home Plan, as Anna has said. And I will say that right now we're looking at also supporting the Housing Action Plan, but specifically some of the goals that we're working on with our Built for Zero Initiative, which is the work that we've been doing with the national organization that's helping us address homelessness. So that will include case management to support veteran homelessness and moving veterans into housing more quickly. We anticipate that some of that will be directed towards creating creation of some of those housing units as well. So we are putting that together, we're putting a proposal together, we'll be delivering it to the city soon. Hope that wasn't convoluted.
And that's for the money that you're keeping? Or is that for the money you will recommend the city spend in a different way?
So that is for the money that we're going to be returning, as well as the 1.5 million that's been still, the city still has.
Okay, gotcha. That is a significant amount, so I'm optimistic that the city and Heading Home can do good things there. Other questions? Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. Does this transfer back of funds to the city? Is that going to create significantly more staff workload? Like, is that going to, like, in terms of the reporting guidelines and what the Hand Department is then going to be responsible for? What, if anything, is that going to add? And what might, how might that need to be reflected in terms of staff?
Well, that's a very good question. I think that in general, making sure that we're in federal compliance is a top priority of the Hand Department at this time. We've gone through a number of audits in the last year, and that is something that we need capacity to increase. However, this is something, it's a playground that we are in every day, so we understand it a little bit better. We know what needs to happen. I think that capacity in the future would be helpful, but it's not outside of what we can do right now, if that makes sense. The other thing that I personally, I would prefer that the funding be spent in larger amounts instead of smaller amounts. When you're dealing with these ARPA funds, social services is very, very complicated because of how they have to be reported, every single receipt, every payroll, every single thing. But there are other projects that have fewer reporting requirements that I think that could help achieve the exact same goals. So I think it's how we go about those projects, and we need to do it in a very smart and calculating way.
So to follow up, do you envision that, like, Hand needs additional staff to deal with this?
Hand needs additional staff, but not just because of this.
I just, I guess I just wanted to give you an opportunity to to talk about that a little bit in terms of how this is going to impact your staff structure.
Well, I think I think the biggest piece is going to be subrecipient monitoring, because anytime that you give money out, you have to, you are inheriting the responsibility of the federal government. So that means that you are going out and you are periodically checking, whether that's quarterly, annually, for a long period of time. This doesn't just end at 2026. This carries on, very similarly to how we spend our CDBG or our home funds, all of our subrecipients have to be monitored very closely. So the more projects, the more money that we get, the more subrecipient managing that we have to do. This isn't a right now problem, this is a next year problem. This is out in the future problem, if that makes sense, as the funds are out. So the ARPA funds have to be fully committed by the end of this year, but they can be being spent until the end of 2026, if that makes sense. Did that answer your question?
So I have a follow up question on that. Since the the money for Hand has to be, I mean, from ARPA funds, it has to be appropriated by the end of this year or like?
Committed in agreement.
Committed.
By the end of this calendar year, yes, that's correct.
And do you foresee any problem in doing that now that you'll have 1.7 million dollars to appropriate?
I do not. I do not. We have more asks than we can possibly fill. So I do not think that it's a problem, but I do think that we have to be very calculated about how we are spending it to make sure that we're achieving the greatest benefit to the community.
Okay, very good. Any other questions on this part of the appropriation ordinance? Seeing none? Oh, Councilmember Stasburg?
I have one more, which might be a question for the controller. Is there any news or an updated total of what might be coming back in terms of this 500,000 cap, but it's probably not going to be that much? Like, what's the update?
As of today, we don't, we just don't have that information yet. They're still working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any final questions before we go to the public? Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on Part Three of the appropriation ordinance, which is ARPA funds for homelessness programs?
Again, the public comment period for this appropriation ordinance does serve as the public hearing, and if you are on Zoom and you'd like to make a comment, you can use the raise hand feature under the reactions tab or more tab, and if you cannot find it, send a chat to the meeting host.
All right, I don't see anybody here in council chambers. Do you see any movement on Zoom, Deputy Attorney Kula?
Not immediately, no.
All right, we'll come back to council members. Are there any final comments from council members? Councilmember Stasburg?
I'll say that especially after our presentation today about the unhoused that we have, I just really hope that we can do something really good with this with this money and the additional funds that we can expect from ARPA. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments, Deputy Clerk Stoll, could you please call the roll on Part Three of the appropriation ordinance?
Councilmember Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes. And that passes with a vote of 8-0. So we have Parts One and Part Three of the appropriation ordinance that have been adopted. Next, we will move to additional public comment. If there's anybody who did not give public comment during the first period of open public comment, you can do so now, up to three minutes each, and you would need to sign in and state your name for the record. Is there anybody in council chambers? I see we have somebody approaching. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening.
There should be a signing sheet there.
Terry Amsler, my wife and I live in District Five, actually. Very briefly, about nothing on the agenda tonight, but about what your work that is to come around the consensus building, meaning model work that you're undertaking, very, very briefly. First, thank you for your attention to this idea and to seeing what can be done with it. I just have a couple of brief comments in hopes that my own experience in such things over the years and years might be helpful. Three arenas. One, you're going to have to communicate the heck out of this thing and what the heck this thing is to the public. It's hard to make people understand doing something different anyway as a public body, to do something that you're talking with language. Most people don't understand what consensus building is. You're going to have to do some work, so I urge you to do whatever you can do within the realm of capacities and time and such, because it's important work you're going to do. Two, participation. To do the work that you most want to do, I believe, it requires an intention of participation. Who's in the room? For what's the ethics and values are that you're are behind your actions? That's extra work on your part, not just your part, those that work with you, staff, others, media elements. It's a lot of work. Lastly, process. And this goes back to the the elements of of what it is. Consensus itself or consensus building strikes the casual observer as reaching an agreement or at least common understanding. Not a bad thing as a decision making body. Yeah, makes some sense. To some extent of what you're trying to get at perhaps suggests different elements of what one might call process architectures or process models, choose your language. Some it's more agreement seeking, some it's more deliberative and/or, some it's more dialogue, speaking to be understood or to give information. There's different, these are all cousins in the same small group and larger group process work families, but they're different and require not just understanding of yourselves, your own collective homework, but as you speak to those to participate, understanding in what part of the meeting, you're looking for what kind of communication for what purpose. So the ground rules become more important in some ways than your typical meetings. There, I think exhausted my time. I just wish you well. It's a good idea. Thank you.
Could you please make sure to sign in, Mr. Amsler, if you haven't already? Thank you.
The protocol.
We appreciate it. Does anybody else want to give public comment? Please note that if you gave public comment at the first part of the meeting, that was it, that we don't allow people to give open public comment, both at the early part and at the late part of the meeting. So I don't see anybody else. Since this gentleman already gave public comment at the early part of the meeting, that was that was it for for that comment this evening. So we can come back. Is there anybody on Zoom? Attorney Kula?
No hands raised.
All right. Okay, so we can come back to the council. So as was just mentioned by Mr. Amsler and that I mentioned earlier, our meeting next week, next Wednesday, August 14th at 6:30 PM in this chamber, will be a completely different beast than normal. It will not be a regular session. It will be a, what we're calling a consensus building activity, meaning we want to invite, and we have invited, the public and people with expertise in the area to talk about street homelessness. And we will have some introductory information about the status of street homelessness in our community. We will talk about what the city council can and cannot do just in their role in local government. And then we will have breakout groups to address specific questions so that everybody can give some input and report back to the big group, and then hopefully we can, at least among council members, come to some agreement on next steps. So it's very ambitious, it's very different. Please come and allow us to roll with the punches a little bit as we start this new type of meeting for the first time. I think that's it, so I think we can adjourn. Thank you.